Good morning and welcome to the December 22, 2010 meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. And we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now I would ask all to take a moment of silence so that we can remember all of our troops who served both here and abroad, especially in Iran and Afghanistan, and also for all of those who gave their lives for our country. While we are awaiting the arrival of Lou Cattaldo, our eminent archivist, we have Scott Nickerson here, a clerk of the courts for the county of Barnstable, for the state of Massachusetts, rather.
What's the second flag on your lapel?
U.S. and Massachusetts.
The what?
U.S. and Massachusetts.
Oh. State flag. Well, how did you get one of those? You know, I never, I scored, I scored one for you, there was a little pin that looked like a, you know, a breath pin, but it had something else on it, like economic development or something.
An attorney happened to have one and got one for me and I don't know, and he won't tell me where he got it, so I have no idea.
They, they're very close contacts about those things.
Yes, they are, they seem to be. Hello, everybody.
How are you?
Good. I'd like to start off by thanking the Commissioners for the last 10 years for giving me the opportunity to serve as the Regional Clerk for Barnstable County. However, due to recent things in my life, I have to inform the Commissioners that I will no longer be able to accept any appointment as the Regional Clerk for Barnstable County. I do this not lightly, discussed it a lot with my wife and families and friends about, and has a lot to do with my own financial and family situation. You may not know that we have three children who are now getting to be teenagers that are devoting a lot, need a lot of our time. I think you've all know how you have to cut them around from here to there and everywhere. And I think it's very important that as a father that I do that and be there for them. So that takes up a lot of my time. The other reason is that over the last 10 years as the clerk of courts for Barnstable County, I've lost about 30% of my staff due through attrition, and I've not been able to replace those staff people, as we're well aware of how the economy has been. So I've had to do a lot more work, staying nights and weekends to do that. So that's taken up time. And the last thing that I think is probably the most important reason is I think that as a state employee, I really cannot do county business while I'm being paid as a state employee. I get a little bit of leeway because I'm an elected official, but I think it's very important for the citizens of Barnstable County to have and be able to get in touch with their clerk during normal business hours. And I really can't do that because I have to be run the court during normal business hours. The job has increased a lot over, since once I first started 10 years ago, it's not just signing a bunch of documents, especially now with the internet. I get, there isn't a day that goes by, I just had one this morning, I get several inquiries about it, because especially some people in other parts of the country, their county clerk has a lot different function than we have, and which a lot of that stuff is done by our town clerks, but it's done by county clerks. So I get a lot of inquiries, and that's taken, takes, takes some time, and telephone calls. Just the nature of the county business is such that I really have to do it on nights and weekends, or during my lunch hour, so to speak. And I really just don't have the time with all the other things I have to do, to do it, and I don't think that's fair. I don't think it's fair to the citizens of Barnstable County, and I don't think it's fair to anybody coming to the county. So with that, I will certainly finish out the remainder of my term. I will certainly be here, and I'll stay, I will stay on as long as you wish me to, to help with the transition until you can choose another Regional Clerk. I was certainly going to be around to help out in any transition, I'm not going anywhere, so I'll be more than happy, I spoke with Mark about this, be more than happy for as long as you need me, I'll be able to help question, help people with questions with what's going on. I really think that the Regional Clerk, if I can make a little suggestion to you, should be someone who works for the county, who can do that during county time, be there available for the public. I know I've spoken with Mark about this, I know that the Charter provides that the Regional Clerk can also be the clerk for the Assembly of Delegates. There may be some issues, I know there might be some legal, legal issues that you have to speak with the, with Rob Troy about, but I think it'd be a great fit. They both do a lot of the same work, I think that between the two of them, it'd be a good fit, and I really would suggest to you that you seriously consider of having that. I think it'd be a nice fit to have one person do both of them. So with that, I leave, I enjoyed my work, working for the citizens of Barnstable County over the last 10 years, but I just think that in light of everything that's going on personally in my own life, I don't think it's fair to the citizens, and I think that, so with that, I thank you very much again for allowing me to, to serve as the Regional Clerk. And like I said, I'd be here to help out whoever replaces me, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Scott.
Before you, before you leave, since I've known you most of the time that you've been the clerk, Scott, I've really appreciated your service, you know, just speaking for myself, and I'm sure the Commissioners share that, and you know, I remember when you replaced Phyllis Day, you know, it seems to be such a long time ago now, you've done a good job for us, I know that, you know, that over the time that, you know, that I've served, I could always depend upon your, you know, your good judgment and your, and your knowledge with regard to it, and I, and I believe that, as you say, it's an important, you know, it's an important position, and it's not something that we could cavalierly fill, in my opinion. Having said that, we have two items of great concern coming up. One is, you know, the Assembly needs to be sworn in, I think they're talking about January 5th, and of course, I need to be sworn in.
Yeah, unlike the rest of us.
Well, on that, I go, as I said, I go, I think the way that it's set up is that I stay in office until you decide on it, so I will, I will do that, I'm not, I will stay on as long as you need me to, but I do want to kind of make it a shorter period of time than a longer period of time, but I don't, I get, I agree with you that I don't think you should rush into a decision, it is an important one. So I will stay on certainly to do that, and I don't think there should be any problem with the Assembly. As far as your own, I did speak with the Secretary of the Commonwealth's Office, and I cannot swear you in before.
January 3rd?
Yes, the first Monday in January, so, but I'm certainly available on that day, I should be in, so I can swear you in, and we'll take care of the Assembly of Delegates. And as I said, you know, I'll stay on, if you guys, I'm not trying to rush any of you to make a decision, if you take, if you need, if you need a month or two months or whatever, I have no problem staying on to help out, it's just that I just don't think over the, you know, the next year and going forward, I just, my family situation, I don't see the demands of my time over the next several years, I don't see, is getting less.
No, with teenagers, it won't.
No, the oldest just turned 15, and that's a...
You get another year, you have two years before licenses, so...
And then our youngest is 10, so I think we gotta, we gotta lower his grade.
Scott, I think we agree with you that it should be someone who works for the county, because of that position, and I do appreciate your service too, you and I have always had a great relationship, if there's an issue, you come to me and I come to you, and you know, we just hash it out, we've always been able to do that. But that position has no remuneration, people should know that, and so you've been doing this at no extra recompense for 10 years, and we really do appreciate that. People should know that, because you know, you get the impression that people are just in this for the money, and they're not, they're doing it for public service sake, and we really do appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
And, but I do agree, it should be someone who is with the county, the issue of it being the clerk of the Assembly's come up, there may be some issues with that, there may not be fatal issues, so we, that's a decision I think the Commissioners need to make, but I agree with you, it certainly won't be one that will be made, you know, it will be made, I would say, within the month of January, the very longest, I would think.
But like I said, I'll be here to help out, whatever you guys need, like I said, I'm not trying to abandon anybody or leave anybody in, in a thing, I'll be here, and even afterwards, please, whoever the thing, I'll be more than happy to help out with, with whatever they need, help them come in and stuff like that, so...
Well, your continued presence here makes it very easy.
Yeah, I'm not going anywhere from there, however, so...
At the same time, you know, we still don't want to lose the momentum in terms of getting someone else in here to do it. And the second part is, we have to say goodbye.
Yes, we don't have to say goodbye.
So that's good, too. So you'll still be here, and you'll still be right down the hall.
And that's something that pop in once in a while.
Well, you will be popping in because, you know, this, this may make you happy, but I have been pushing the last couple of meetings that we have to really talk about this Blue Ribbon Building Committee, and I've requested that maybe we ask some of the planners, I know that George Bryant said to go outside, but I think on our initial stages, we have a planning department to take a look at the complex and to maybe come on board with a, with a group of people to say, and bring over the DA's office, and say, this is, this is who we are, and this is what we do, and this is all the space we have, and how can we make this work really well, and how can we go forward, so we'll be working together on that.
That's very interesting to me, so certainly would love to help out on that.
And I think too, the timing, we have to look at the timing, because we're also doing the organizational assessment, which we hope to have done by March or April at the latest.
And that'll be...
And then that will feed into what the county's needs are in terms of space as well.
Because as you see...
And it may dictate, you know, that there might be some moving around that needs to be done, so, and as this gets going, it makes sense to do it all at the same time.
Yeah, it'll help with the reorg all around. As you say, like your, your duties have expanded, I think the county has, has taken a more, you know, leadership role in a lot of different things, so it's expanding in some ways, and I think that...
Maybe Scott doesn't know this, I mean, central to your interests, you know, we did get a waiver from DKM that increased the ability of us to do the lab relocation to the gym, so we did get one from Secretary Perini, he sent us a letter saying, fine, you can do that. So we're working on bidding that project out pretty soon, so over the next 12, 18 months, we should be able to move the lab up there, thus string the space in here to do, kind of central to what you're interested in, the Sally Port and the holding piece and all.
I think that's a, something that we all should be concerned about going forward, that we need to address sooner rather than later.
Absolutely.
So that seems to be unlocked a little bit.
Oh, good. No, but thank, thank you, I appreciate, I've worked very well with all of you, I thank you very much.
Yes, you do, and we enjoy it.
I, I thank you very much for the opportunity that you've given me over the last 10 years, I appreciate it.
Thanks.
All right, and we'll see you over at our Christmas.
Yes, yes.
Okay. It's Lou Cattaldo Day.
Yes, this is Lou Cattaldo Day, welcome, Lou.
Speaking of which, here is the...
And Laura, welcome, Laura.
It's a surprise.
It is a surprise.
You don't get a check, right?
We, we just had that one a little while ago, didn't we?
No, we have another one today.
I've been deluged with a lot of fine things.
Well, that was because of the newspaper article, yeah.
Yes, and what a fine picture that was, of you right on the front page, I loved that.
Really, the reaction, I, I don't even, without anything of it, I mean, it's just...
What'd you do?
Just another thing.
Well, Lou, we have a proclamation that we want to present to you today on what we have determined to be Lou Cattaldo Day.
I'll be damned.
So it says, by the county commissioner...
You'll be blessed.
I will be blessed.
By the county commissioners, a proclamation for Lou Cattaldo. Whereas Lou Cattaldo has worked tirelessly in preserving the history of Barnstable County through the Barnstable County Tercentenary Committee, the Tales of Cape Cod, the Tracer Museum, the John F. Kennedy Museum, and the Barnstable County Archives, and whereas he has contributed to the arts of Barnstable County through his efforts to construct the James Otis statue, Mercy Otis Warren statue, and the John F. Kennedy memorial, and whereas his dedication each year to the Mercy Otis Woman of the Year Committee provides recognition to an outstanding Cape Cod resident for her contributions to the arts, education, business, and patriotism of her community. Now therefore, we, Mary Pat Flynn, William Doherty, and Sheila Lyons, county commissioners of Barnstable County, to hereby proclaim December 22, 2010, as Lou Cattaldo Day in Barnstable County, and to hereby name the present and future archives facility as the Lou Cattaldo Barnstable County Archives Facility, signed by all the Commissioners.
Mary Flabregas said, and I can't think of enough.
Congratulations, Lou.
Yeah, I'll go this way.
Congratulations, Lou.
Thank you very much.
You deserve it.
Lou, congratulations.
Thank you.
And we have another picture, if you remember, from our tour, Bill Doherty took that, a picture of you and Laura. So Lou, congratulations.
Congratulations, Lou.
Really, you have done so much, and we so much appreciate it.
I've worked with many Commissioners over the years, but by God, you, you guys surpass them.
Well, that's what we were shooting for.
I've got the facilities up there, Tess is up there now, and we have somebody coming in from the town, they're going to be videographing the thing, I guess, so it has caused a lot of stir, more so than I thought, I just thought it was just another room that we're working on. But anyway, we're far exceeding the capacity of the room by virtue of the fact that I still have no place to put 500 books, which consists of a lot of Barnstable County history and presidents of, over the years, it's just a compilation of many years of accumulations.
Well, we're working on it, on how we can get a fine facility, because we just spoke about doing a, maybe a building committee as far as looking at our space and making sure that everything is in the right place and that there is enough space.
Well, we did talk about, they already have a slab out there.
Right.
If I could raise the money...
Yes.
Yeah, you got some space out there, yeah? You said that you can use it.
The, the, the building, of course, will be the property of the county, I'll just raise the money for it.
Well, and we will help you do that, yeah.
That's my last mention.
Okay.
All right, so you have to stick around till it's done.
The other, yeah, sir.
Don't say that, Lou, you'll come up with something else after that. You know that.
Last, last night I went out to get some groceries, to show you how close, you never know when the next day is going to be there, and it was dark, well, you know, the slush and everything, and I went down to pick up something in the, in the driveway there, all the cars parked, and this truck missed me by about this much.
My God, oh, my God.
I was bending over to pick up the paper, if he'd have hit me, they would have been in the end.
That's right, well, we're very happy that didn't happen.
Well, thanks God that I'm able to do these things, because I love to do them.
I have a photograph that I'm going to give you, it's the official congressional photograph of Kennedy's last State of the Union address to Congress.
Oh, really?
Do you have one of those? Well, I only have the one.
We can put that in the archive, I'm sure.
I think it would be a good thing to have in the archives, I don't, probably not too many of them around.
I've been surprising myself, I've been going through a bunch of things, and I find that I've been involved in a little more things than I thought, like, I was involved in the, the, oh, they have that for the, for the kids there, the YMCA.
Oh, yeah.
This newspaper fellow, came to me, and we got together, and by God, we worked on it, we got the YMCA down here, and then everybody else came along. I think Heywood Barkus, Commissioner Barkus was involved too, we got, I brought the idea over to him, and the thing got rolling. So there's a lot of things that we've done with the county over the years that have been things that I just take as granted, that it's a day-to-day thing.
Right, and they've been great contributions, and lasting contributions.
We've truly been lucky to have you.
Certainly have.
Afterwards, you start thinking about, well, see, I guess I was involved in a few things.
Yes, you've made great contributions.
The Native Americans, I love working with them, and, oh, everyone else, I guess. And they still have the calls today, people want information on certain things.
Well, we truly appreciate all you do, and we hope you're going to join us for lunch.
Yes, celebrate Lou Cattaldo Day.
Yes.
Well, you know, that's all that's on, I see you guys.
Yes, so we'll, on every, on every 20 seconds, so congratulations.
We'll see you at lunch.
We just have a couple of minutes to do.
Yeah, some business, and enjoying it.
Lunch is going to be over at 11:12, and of course, your wife is invited.
Okay, that's fine.
So you're welcome to stay here if you want.
And the press has been really great, I want to recognize them, they've always been there to give us a boost. Thank you very much.
Okay, our next, that's great. Our next item of business are our Commissioners' actions for the day, does anyone have...
I'll move them.
I second.
Okay. If no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, not opposed, three in favor, motion carries. I have some general correspondence here from Darlene, from AmeriCorps, and these are some letters from the various towns where projects have been completed over the last six months, the towns of Brewster, and, well, the Cranberry Festival, Ralph Lee Fire Department, the Harwich Conservation Trust, the Orleans Conservation Trust, and I'm not going to read them all, but I hope you will read them, and, which is great, because it's really important to know that the community is grateful and supports.
Right, and benefiting.
And also, we have a letter from UMass, from the Chancellor of UMass Dartmouth, who has reviewed our November 10 letter regarding the scientific review of the estuaries project, and what she says is that, is that UMass Dartmouth has invested significant intellectual and financial resources in making the Mass Estuaries Project a successful partnership between the Commonwealth, the communities, non-government organizations, and the university, and they value highly this partnership. While underlying science of the project has undergone various forms of review over the last two decades, we fully understand the need to continue building confidence in the complex and highly specialized work when so much is at stake. That is why we have endorsed the effort of the county commissioners and the Cape Cod Water Protection Collaborative to develop an independent and timely review that will build confidence while avoiding needless delay, and that's Jean McCormick, Chancellor of the University, so that's, that's good.
Good, so they're on board?
Anyone have any reports they wish to make?
Yeah, I wanted to mention that we were, Sheila had asked when we were over at the Assembly, that we have a discussion of building issues in the complex, and we should put it on our agenda, I passed it on to Mark, and I believe he'd suggested February...
Yeah, once we get past the budget review.
Okay, and that, there have been some questions that have been raised about the, our symposium, our dates and timeline to do that, as well as the, well, the CMed, so I think that we need to, perhaps, look at a time where we discuss this, you know, discuss both of those in depth, as well as the solid waste management issues. And Marcia King was looking for a various report, and Mark reminded me that when I was on the Assembly, I asked you, I asked for that monthly report, which I've been getting since then.
Right, we still send that over, so I wasn't sure whether she meant something different.
And I sent a note to her suggesting that she look for the latest.
What does she mean by various?
We sent them over monthly.
Updated, updated where the finance is, just wanted to be clear.
A monthly report would be where we are, where we're not.
Yeah, where we, where we are with the budget.
And Julie, oh, and Julie Taylor had suggested that the Assembly wait until Paul responds with a promised expanded details on regulatory ordinance on land-based wind matters before a, before they would pursue a county-wide DCPC. I thought that was, that was wise, and I just wanted to pass it on, so I think that that's making it perfectly progress, and of course...
That's probably a prudent answer to the upper K question, too, I think.
Yes, because we're going to have to address the issue, the requests from the Falmouth Planning Board, right, an upper K DCPC.
Well, since Tom Keys was leaving, and Julie Taylor was, you know, was in support of waiting, and we hadn't heard from Dick, you know, Dick Anderson, I believe that that would, you know, that we might use that as a response, since those are, especially since Julie Taylor's part of the upper K Assembly members, that we suggest we need to hear us.
Other response, kind of, to accompany that, was that it would be good to hear from the Selectmen.
Exactly, yes.
Sometimes you don't always know how they stand on particular issues.
Have we, have we submitted a vote to that, I speak for a claim?
No, but we probably should do that.
It didn't come up at the Selectmen and Councilors Association meeting?
I mentioned it, I brought it up to the Selectmen and Councilors Association and suggested that before we took any action, that we believed it, although we hadn't discussed it yet, and I was only speaking for myself, that I thought that we should, in fact, receive some kind of a letter of either support or non-support from the various boards of Selectmen, so maybe we could...
Reinforce that, yeah.
Reinforce that, or maybe at our, put it on the agenda for quickly for our first meeting in January to say we want to send a letter out to the, to the various towns asking the Selectmen if they are interested in supporting a Cape-wide DCPC.
Yeah, okay, so we have a letter from the Falmouth Planning Board, maybe I'll drop the response to that basically says, thank you very much, two things, we are going to wait for the Commission's response on the bigger kind of Cape-wide wind issue, and two, we would like, and we can see, see those boards, we'd like the born sandwich on Falmouth Board to Selectmen to consider your request.
And you'll send them a copy of the Falmouth request?
And send them the copy.
Right, so that they understand.
Just so that we respond to the Falmouth Planning Board?
The Planning Board in Falmouth also is putting an article on the warrant for the April Town Meeting to request a moratorium, a year-long moratorium on any kind of wind turbine development.
Ironically, the New York Times Magazine this Sunday had an article on turbine-free wind power, and, and also some references to where you can find more information on it. I was going to give this to Maggie to, you know, to put into the...
Turbine-free wind power?
Turbine-free wind power.
Yeah, it's a different...
There's different types.
Anything that provides movement, yeah, I have the picture there. It, it would be less intrusive in some cases, but more intrusive in others, since you'd have like, if you're dealing with photovoltaics, for example, you have to have an array that covers a certain amount of surface area in order to, you know, in order to translate solar power or solar energy into electric power, and this appears to be the same thing, you know, from a physical point of view. But nevertheless, it has been, it has been brought up as an alternative, and people that are looking at it should know that we're, we're at least open to hearing other applications of technologies as we look forward, although the capital investment in photovoltaics is well with the capital investment in wind machines are considerably larger than, than the ones in which we have proposed, so that's right.
So...
So let me do that, let me drop the response to the Planning Board that says all those things that we just said.
That's funny. Anything else, I said anything?
I have two things, I have my weekly report, which I will pass out to you, and part of the weekly report, of course, is, is the first budget review package, so here you go.
Wow.
This is for our...
Holiday reading, right.
One and a half week subsequent, don't forget, we're not meeting on Wednesday the 5th, we're meeting on Monday the 3rd.
Right.
What time are we meeting on the 3rd?
I believe, we haven't established a start time yet, because we have organizational business to do, but the budget review starts at 9:30, so you can either decide to start at 8:30 or 9, either one.
Nine o'clock?
Nine, okay, that's good.
What time does Scott come in?
I can get him to come in at nine o'clock, I believe. He is sat for the Assembly, that was another question you had, Joe.
You do? I thought you, you just continued on.
Yeah, I didn't think you did.
I didn't think you had to be sworn in.
I asked, I asked Scott to look into it, and I have to be sworn in again, I was sworn in.
I didn't think you did, but...
I was sworn in the second time.
Okay, so we'll say start time...
However, I could continue until I was relieved, right?
Yes.
That's what I thought, that's why I didn't matter.
Okay, well, I guess...
But anyways, whatever, so on 1, 3, start time will be nine o'clock.
No.
And so there's the, a copy of the budget review schedule, and the first package is for your review. I owe you a revenue analysis and a 2012 revenue projection, which I'm going to work on tomorrow, so I will send to you electronically, and you'll get a chance to, to look at that. The other thing I wanted to let you know is that the Joanne and the staff just completed the FY 2010 schedule of courthouse costs, you know, basically that's what we bill the state for courthouse rental every year, and the amount being billed is $1,377,864. And the process that happens is the state will base, the state will send a team of auditors in, they'll audit every, down to the last light bulb, and we've been pretty successful at surviving the audit, and in fact, even last year, I don't think we had any disallowances, and they did include the administrative cost for payment last year, we'll see how it is this year, word is that the state budget is much tighter this year than it was in the last couple of years, so, and that's saying something, so we'll see, but those will be paid by the state during FY 2012, so those will be part of our revenues for that year, so. Also... for that year. So. Also, Maggie was over meeting with the selection group that's reviewing the resumes for the Assembly of Delegates clerk position. They're working on doing a short list of those candidates. They had a total of 39 qualified candidates submit resumes. As Scott mentioned, that was one of the considerations that you guys will have to make is if we want to name that person the clerk of the county, I think the issue really was, it's the whole election issue. And that is, the county clerk has to do the paperwork for the assembly election and those positions. And Bob Troy had some concerns that there might be the appearance of a conflict on that. But I don't think it was fatal if that was what you wanted to choose. And it was prohibitive.
Could you repeat that last?
The only election function that the county clerk has to do, he doesn't do yours, you go directly to the state, doesn't do JACs as registry of deeds, he goes directly to the state. But the county clerk has to do the paperwork for the Assembly of Delegates positions. They have to submit the paperwork to the county clerk, et cetera, et cetera. There might be the appearance of a conflict if it's the people who are running for office are the same person that actually appoint the assembly clerk. So there is that issue. Scott's absolutely right. In the charter, it does make a reference to the, but it says "may." The assembly clerk may be the county clerk.
I have an issue with having them fill both positions, which I suppose we could, we could talk about at some point, is that there is a loyalty issue with regard to the assembly clerk fulfilling the duties and supporting the assembly, which is in the legislative body. And the county clerk would be fulfilling the duties of being a clerk for the executive branch. So where, you know, where that, you know, where the allegiance would go, I suppose lined up with the concern about whether or not there'd be a conflict of interest.
Yeah, well, the clerk's not really an executive function, it's more an independent kind of function.
But we, but we appoint. And there's another issue, in that we could appoint somebody to be a county clerk and they may fail of election of being appointed at the assembly.
Well, you know, towns appoint their county, their town clerks, and they do all the paperwork for the selectmen and all the other officers.
Exactly.
So, I mean, I don't know why it would be.
Well, we have to think about it.
But we need to think about it.
I think we do have to think about it. And I think we have to think about the functions of what a county clerk does, I mean, for us.
Yeah, we need to know what the functions of a county clerk.
And really see, you know, do we want to expand that? I mean, because we are, I mean, he's saying he showed up stuff, we are, I mean, I think that, you know, to have a staff person that can handle a lot of different legal, you know, let's take a look at exactly what it is they do and what kind of person would we want to have fulfill that? And what other things could they be responsible?
And right now, there's no compensation for that. So we should do it pretty quickly.
Yeah, we have to consider it.
Well, I have an alternative if you decide not to do the assembly clerk.
Oh, you do have an alternative, okay. Well, we should discuss that on, as an item.
Yeah, I don't want to mention any names, as we decide to go a different direction. So that's going on. I did give the presentation with my retirement county, my county retirement add-on to the Nantucket Selectment that was very well received. Debbie Cohen, the executive director of the system, also met earlier in the day with staff and answered retirement questions for them. And I also want to mention that in terms of our investment performance through November, we're doing pretty good. We are a positive 8.26% for the year on the PRIM investments. So that's pretty good. We are finalizing review of the Open Cape response to the RFP that we did. And Bob Troy has communicated, we had a few concerns in terms of their response. He's communicated those to the Open Cape team. So, and it wasn't anything major, it was a couple of minor points. So we're awaiting their response.
If I can say something on that, I have talked to some of the Open Cape people. And if Bob could be a little bit more.
I think he was talking to Mike Scott today.
Yeah, I mean, he has to, I mean, there was, there was a period there where they really didn't hear anything back from him for a couple of weeks. I mean, he really needs to respond to them because they are on a timetable. We are partnering with them. And I think that this is only going to be a very good partnership for us in the future. So I don't want to have anything, hold them back or where they lose momentum or even lose this deal. So if you could just.
Since you've been talking to them, one of the concerns that I had when they set up, you know, they only have three people. Is that enough people to take care of the administrative burden of doing what they're doing?
You know, they do have an administrative assistant over there now.
There's three, that's one of the three.
Yeah, and I think they have a couple of other.
Is there somebody over there full-time?
Yes, there's somebody over there full-time. There's Gary, there's Dan. I know Art comes in and out. And then they have two other.
Art is a volunteer, though.
Yes. But right now, they do. I mean, right, but they, but as they're moving forward, these things are really sort of like, you know, this comes in, there's a timetable. And they really need a faster turnaround time on information. And if there's glitches, are a dispute not two weeks, because it really is.
Well, this was the review of the proposal.
Right, right. But they, yeah, but they, they needed that response back. So just for the future, I don't want.
Yeah, oh, yeah. All right. And then the last thing is, I will be on vacation from December 24th to January 2nd. So I want to wish you all a Merry Christmas.
We wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year as well.
I'll be here tomorrow, but we are closed on Friday, as you know. So, and then we are open on Friday, December 31st, because of a registry of deeds commitment. We like the registry open as much as we can. And that's an important day in their business transactions.
Okay.
So our next meeting then will be Monday, January 3rd, which we set at 9:00.
And just so people know that even though you're going on vacation, somebody's actually running things, who will be running things in your absence?
Maggie's here and with modern communication. Bill, I expect, given one of the forecasts that I've heard from Monday, the 27th, I may get an early phone call from John Blaisdell. So, because I heard one forecast that said they were talking about a significant storm.
On the 27th?
It's one of these that, you know, could do this or do that, or, yeah. But it was actually Mark Foley got an REPC alert, regional emergency planning. Remember, Mark was talking about it yesterday. He was the one that said, either the 26th or the 27th, it could be a significant storm.
The 26th would definitely get stuck up there. But if it does, if it waits till the 27th, it'll get back on Cape.
Yeah. Well, I am supposed to come back on the 27th. And last year, I got my vacation blown out from snow.
So keep your eye open.
I will, I will. I might be, I might be leaving earlier.
This was from Mark Foley. And he's associated with the REPC. And that's why they're getting these earlier alerts.
Hopefully they're.
Hopefully they're as right as they usually are.
Yeah, I know. Well, we were supposed to get rain, right, in the last couple of days.
Yeah, exactly.
The other Cape was socks.
Well, they were talking about this storm being a big storm for the Patriot game on Sunday night. I didn't see any snow on the Patriot.
But they barely escaped with their wives.
But that was a good game.
That was good.
Yeah, that last 13 minutes.
Yeah, but the glass half-full, they didn't play so good and they still won.
Yeah.
They better play better than that.
Plays so well.
I guess it's going to be very short.
Well, we want to wish a happy, a Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays to our media giants, who are all the giants.
Yes, yes.
Who are very faithful to us and we appreciate all you do, truly.
Right.
Yes.
And thank God that the Patriots are there, otherwise nobody'd know anything about it.
That's right.
What would we know?
Now, if you can only get them to really care. They might know what we're doing.
This is the happy time. But we wish all of our.
All of our constituents, everybody in Cape Cod.
Everyone else.
And the islands.
A really wonderful holiday season.
And in the world.
And so a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
A second.
Good.
Thank you.
So now, if you.